Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I am Sean O'Brien. I am -- these mics aren't that good. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'm Sean O'Brien. I'm the town moderator, and I'm honored to call to order this special town meeting. At 7:02, we had a quorum present. There's 111 registered voters here. The tellers are Paul Armstrong, Paul Basler, and Jim Sol. They've all been sworn. The warrant having previously been declared and properly noticed with constables return to service. As tradition dictates, we waive the reading of the warrant. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. At this time, ladies and gentlemen, I'd like to take a moment of silence for those who have passed, for those residents who continue to find strength, resilience, courage to endure these political, economic, social challenges facing not only our town, but our state and our country. The rules of town meeting. Town meeting is run per town meeting time in our local bylaws. If you wish to address town meeting, step up to the microphone. There's one in each aisle. Wait to be recognized by myself and state your name and address. Please keep your comments to under two minutes, and you may approach the microphone a second time, but only with new information, and that should be limited to one minute. I will explain procedures as needed and will recognize requests for points of order. Motions to amend may be made, but must be reduced to writing prior to being debated. Questions of privilege raises issues affecting rights and privileges at town meeting. If your safety, dignity, integrity, if the volume, temperature, noise interfere with your ability to hear, speak, or participate in town meeting, please yell out question of privilege. Please remain seated unless you're trying to speak at the microphone. Please keep the doorways clear. I hope to continue to have a spirited debate and that this meeting vote supports and challenges the issues presented. You may make a motion to call a question, but you may not debate and then make a motion. Please be respectful to everyone, and remember it's okay to have a different opinion. Does everyone understand the rules? At this time, I'd like to take that moment of silence now. Thank you. Everyone look around. We have exits at the back, exits up front, stage left and stage right. I believe there's an announcement from our clerk.
Yeah, I'd just like to take a minute to recognize that October 17th was the 10th anniversary of the dedication of the POW MIA Chair of Honor. Many cities, towns, sports stadiums, and other agencies have followed suit. So on behalf of family members of those prisoners of war missing in action, thank you to the town of Kingston for never forgetting, and a shout out to my good friend Matt Hamilton.
And there's one further announcement. The capital planning committee currently has a vacancy. If you're interested in helping the town plan and prioritize capital projects, then please send an email to the town, and that's at fincom@kingstonma.gov. I'm sure this will be on the website tomorrow. Could we have the open emotion, please?
Move that the following non-residents and non-registered voters be allowed to enter and address the town meeting. Kate Fedoroff, Town Council. Keith Hickey, Town Administrator. Gloria Mitchell, Assistant Town Administrator. Carol McCoy, Finance Director. Tina Betty, Human Resource Manager. David Walsh, Waste Water Department Superintendent. Jason Silva, Building Commissioner, Zoning Enforcement Officer, Community Development Director. Matthew Pennella, Conservation Agent. Maureen Clark, Principal Assessor. Paula Hatch, Silver Lake School Committee Chair. Jill Prue, Superintendent of Schools. Christine Healy, Director of Business Services, Silver Lake Regional School District. Russell Dupre -- sorry if I pronounced that incorrectly -- Silver Lake Attorney.
All those in favor say aye. Motion carries unanimously. Ladies and gentlemen, in your books, if you can take out a single piece of paper, it's To expedite this meeting and address those matters that require action but tend to generate little debate, I'm going to put forward not three, two consent agendas. Each consent agenda contains articles of the same subject matter. I will move each consent agenda containing multiple articles as a group in a single motion. I will read each article's number and description, and if a member of the town raises or states hold, those items will be removed from the consent agenda and debated in the normal course. Thereafter, I move the articles which have not been held in a single motion. So in essence, I'm taking Articles Three, FY24 Transfer to Employment Liabilities Reserve Fund. Article Four, Supplemental F-24 Operating Budget. Article Five, Supplement Grant Funding for Evergreen Pembroke Street Intersection Improvements. Article Six, Upgrade of Municipal Finance Software. Article Nine, Established Tax Title Collection Revolving Fund. Article Ten, Refunding for Tax Title Process. Article Eleven, Correct Collector Bargaining Funding from General Fund to Water Fund. And finally, Article Twelve, Correct Collector Bargaining Funding from General Fund to Water and Waste Funds. So I'm going to call each number out. If you want this taken off the consent agenda, say hold. If not, it won't be debated, it won't be argued, there'll be one motion to pass these eight or nine articles. Does everyone understand? Is anyone confused? Raise your hand. All right. Article Three. Article Four. Article Five. Article Six. Article Nine. Article Ten. Article Eleven. Article Twelve. Having heard no holds, let's move to a vote. All in favor of moving Articles Three, Four, Five, Six, Nine, Ten, Eleven, and Twelve as printed in the informational warrant, say aye. All those opposed? Articles pass unanimously. On the back of the same page, there's a second consent agenda, and it's the same as we just did. It's in reference to Articles Seventeen, F-24 Wage and Personnel Bylaw, Amendments and Compensation Schedule. Article Eighteen, Amend the General Bylaws, Chapter Two, Town Meeting. Article Nineteen, Amend the General Bylaws, Chapter Three, Finance Committee and Budget Process. And Article Twenty, Amend General Bylaws, Chapter Four, Council on Aging. Again, I'm going to call them out. If you want to hold and debate them and remove them from the consent agenda, now is your time. If not, we will vote. Calling Article Seventeen. Calling Article Eighteen. Calling Article Nineteen. Calling Article Twenty. Having heard no holds, let's move to a vote. All in favor of Articles Seventeen, Eighteen, Nineteen, and Twenty as printed in the informational warrant, say aye. All those opposed? Motion carries unanimously. We're more than halfway done. Moving on to Article One. So three, four.
My name is Amy Courtwright. I am a Kingston representative to the Silver Lake School Committee, presenting on behalf of Article One. So this article, why are we coming here tonight for this? The biggest part of this is to include the pre-K special education program into our regional agreement. We're amending the regional agreement to include this pre-K special ed program. It is required by law that all towns offer special education to students with disabilities from ages 2.9 to...
Can you just read the motion into the record to see if the town will vote?
Sorry about that. "To see if the town will vote to adopt the amended regional agreement to be effective July 1st, 2024 by deleting the text shown with a strike through and inserting the text shown underline or take any action relative thereto."
And this is your move to, I move, correct?
I move.
Okay, good. Do we have a second on this? Okay. Now tell us all about it, please.
So, why are we amending the Silver Lake Regional Agreement? I'm going to start over again. "To include the pre-kindergarten, pre-K special education program into the regional agreement, it is required by law that all towns offer education to students with disabilities from ages 2.9 to 22. Our Silver Lake pre-K program, which has been running since the 1980s, was not written into the original agreement. In 2022, the Massachusetts Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, DESI, informed the district that this needed to be corrected. In order to keep running the program, which has benefited countless students from all three Silver Lake communities, we need to amend the regional agreement to include it. If we do not update the regional agreement to include the pre-K, Kingston will have to create its own program with substantial implications beginning in the 24-25 school year. The new language has been approved by DESI and reviewed by the Silver Lake Regional School District Attorney." That's the first major reason. The updates to the regional agreement also update changes to Massachusetts general laws and the Code of Massachusetts Regulations, which have occurred since the last amendment to the regional agreement, to adjust the weighted votes of the regional school committee to reflect the most recent 2020 census data, and it is also considered best practice for regional agreements to be reviewed every 10 years and brought forth to the towns for amendments if needed. Thank you.
Anybody? Hold on. Nope, just to pass it by. We'll move it for a vote. It's a majority vote. There's a Board of Selectmen favorable five-zero. All those in favor of Article One as printed in the warrant, say aye. All those opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Article Two, please.
Article Two, "Move the town transfer the sum of $11,866.89 from prior year's special articles identified in the warrant to pay outstanding bills as printed in the warrant." So this is essentially just an article to pay outstanding invoices for purchases that were before July 1st, 2023, and the funding sources will be unexpended articles from past years.
Open for debate? Anyone want to be heard? Seeing nothing, I'll move for a vote. All those in favor of Article Two as printed in the warrant, say aye. All those opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Going to seven. You got seven and eight?
Seven and eight. All right.
I am also short. So, really? This is a very long motion. Very long motion. All right. Move the town approve Article Seven as printed in the warrant.
Do I have a second?
The description is, "This article would create a stabilization fund for funding received from opiate settlement cases that must be used to discourage dependency issues, prescription drugs."
Any debate? Okay. It's a two-thirds vote favorable by the Board of Selectmen and the Finance Committee unanimously. All those in favor of Article Seven as printed in the warrant, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Eight?
All right. Motion eight. "Move the town vote to transfer from free cash the sum of $40,000 to be expended for all of the purposes allowed by law pursuant to the terms of the applicable opiate litigation documents inconsistent with any state guidelines or regulations further clarifying allowable uses of opiate litigation settlement funds." Okay. So, funds from opiate litigation settlements were deposited as general fund monies in fiscal year 2023 and to date this current fiscal year totaling $51,542.74. These funds must be spent pursuant to the opiate litigation settlement agreement solely for stated allowable purposes. The previous article establishes a stabilization fund for when the settlement monies come in. This article will authorize the town to use such funds for their stated purpose without further town meeting vote.
Anyone want to be heard? Open for debate? Seeing none, let's move it to a vote. All those in favor of Article Eight as printed in the warrant, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Onto Article Thirteen, which I see a lot of baseball hats in the far right corner. Yes, sir.
Brian Payne, Christmas Tree Lane, Kingston.
Just turn them up. You're tall. Thank you.
Brian Payne, Christmas Tree Lane, Kingston, and Chair of the Community Preservation Commission.
Just a little closer to the mic, please. Sorry.
No problem. Brian Payne, Christmas Tree Lane, Chair of the Community Preservation Commission. "I move the town vote to appropriate from available Community Preservation Act undesignated funds, a sum of $242,762, to make field and drainage improvements at the Opachiski Field Complex as presented at town meeting and recommended by the Community Preservation Committee under the supervision of the Kingston Recreation Commission, with all expenses subject to final review and approval by the Community Preservation Committee prior to submittal for payment."
Open it up.
"If funded, the project proposes to make field and drainage improvements at the Opachiski Field Complex."
Any questions? Seeing none, I'll move it to a vote. This was favorable by the Board of Selectmen, five-zero. Finance Committee, seven-zero. Capital Planning, four-zero. And Community Preservation Committee, it was a four-to-two vote. It's a majority vote. All those in favor of Article Thirteen as printed in the warrant, say aye. All those opposed? Motion passes with minimal opposition. Now the fun part, water. No, come right up here. Just walk around the... No, there you go. Thank you. Just got to stand close to that microphone.
Bob Berlanson, Vice Chair of the Water Commission. Bob Berlanson, Vice Chair of the Water Commission. "We move Article Fourteen to repurpose a portion of a water department use of retained earnings approved at the April 2023 Annual Town Meeting. We want to see if the town will vote to amend the vote of the town meeting under Article Six of the 2023 Annual Town Meeting by repurposing $200,000 appropriated from the Water Enterprise retained earnings and transferring such funds to the Water Enterprise Fund operating budget." Can we describe it to him?
The only, just move, so you moved to see if the town will vote to amend and vote at town meeting Article Six?
I move Article Fourteen, yes.
Can you just read to see where it says move?
Okay.
Next year, I'll highlight that.
So, yeah, "We move the town vote to amend the vote of the town meeting under Article Six of the 2023 Annual Town Meeting by repurposing $200,000 appropriated from Water Enterprise retained earnings and transferring such funds to the Water Enterprise Fund operating
Can you tell us about it?
So, we had to rearrange some funds because of a shortfall, and one of the things we were able to do is repurpose these funds and get them replaced by ARPA funds so that it doesn't overall encumber our budget that badly, but we need to repurpose those funds in order to make this work.
Seeing no one approaching the microphones to debate, I'll move this to a vote. This is Article Fourteen. It's a majority vote favorable by the Board of Selectmen, five-zero. Finance Committee, it was a six-o vote, and someone didn't vote. All those in favor of Article Fourteen as printed in the warrant, say aye. All those opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, sir. Keith, you have those sunglasses for me?
We heard your concerns from the last town meeting and have amended this article to remove the language on the second line that states "and infrastructure to support the wastewater treatment plant," as well as adding, on the fourth line, the extension of related sewer lines necessary to connect the wastewater treatment plant to the leaching fields. And then the third sentence from the bottom, we struck out the phrase "on new users." So I'll read the article as amended. "Move the town appropriates $13 million to pay costs of designing, constructing, equipping, and furnishing leaching fields to support the reduction of nitrogen levels in town, including but not limited to the construction and/or reconstruction of related pump stations, the extension of related sewer lines necessary to connect the wastewater treatment plant to leaching fields, the acquisition of any easements and land necessary to complete the improvements described above, and the payment of all other costs incidental and related thereto, in that to meet this appropriation, the treasurer with the approval of the selectmen is authorized to borrow this amount under and pursuant to Mass. General Law, Chapter Forty-Four, Section Eight, Fourteen, pursuant to any other enabling authority, and to issue bonds or notes of the town therefore that the Board of Selectmen is authorized to contract for and expend any federal or state aid available for the project. In that all or any portion of the amount authorized to be borrowed by this vote may be borrowed through the Massachusetts Clean Water Trust, the trust, and any appropriate official or officials of the town are hereby authorized to execute any agreements with the trust and the Department of Environmental Protection of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts that may be required in connection with any such loan obtained through the trust. While the debt issued pursuant to the authority of this vote will be a general obligation of the town pursuant to the general laws, it is the town's intent that the debt service on such debt be paid in the first instance from a combination of state and federal grants, betterment assessments, and connection fees, except to the extent any treatment capacity is reserved for town purposes, in which case a portion of the annual debt service proportional to the amount of treatment capacity reserved for town purposes during the same annual period shall be payable in the first instance from the general fund."
Is there a second? Want to present any? Oh, yeah. I'm sorry. Please, present.
Okay. This is an infrastructure replacement, not a sewer line extension. We need to inform DEP by next Tuesday, October 31st, of a positive town meeting vote to receive the two-and-a-half percent low interest loan. And then I can turn it over to Brian for the details.
Thank you very much. Good evening. My name is Brian Donahoe. I'm a member of the Sewer Commission.
Closer to the mic, please. I'm working on it.
Good evening. My name is Brian Donahoe, Seventeen School Street, Kingston. I'm a member of the Sewer Commission.
You got to either take, you can...
Usually people tell me I'm yelling, but... All right. My name is Brian Donahoe, School Street, Kingston, a member of the Sewer Commission. I'm here to speak in favor of this article, which is critical to the completion of the wastewater treatment plant that the town of Kingston began over 23 years ago. It was a monumental, important project to start from an environmental and a public health point of view in particular, and generally how it improved the quality of life in Kingston. It will continue to improve the quality of life if we continue to finish the job we started. I just have to, excuse me, the slides are a little different than I had started working on. So, just to take you back to the beginning on the history of the wastewater department and how we got to this point. Around 1983 to 1998, the town was dealing with considerable problems along the coastal part of the town with failed septic systems, leaching, septage, and sewage running on the street, particularly from in the Adena area, the Rocky Nook area along the town 3A corridor. It was continual to intermittent, but it was a significant public health problem. DEP was stepping in at the time to try to help solve this problem, and through a lot of work with a lot of people at the time of the Sewer Advisory Committee, a plan was developed. It's called a facility plan. It's very important to remember that, and an environmental impact report was also prepared at the time to basically lock in what the town was going to pursue starting then. So in 1997, the town meeting approved $33 million for sewer improvements. At the time, some of that money was actually from general obligation bonds because the work that was being done improved the entire town's quality of life. That is, we were all going to be able to share in going to Gray's Beach, we're all going to be sharing in the water quality of Kingston Bay and the entire watershed of the inner harbor. We're all going to benefit from that. So that's what that one-third was for. Two-thirds of the payment was going to be made by the users, by the owners and users of the sewer system, which represented about, right now, 20% of the town. That 20% of the town has not changed since the beginning. I want to stress that. There's no expansion from that. So in 2001, we had the startup. People started to connect to the sewer. Much of that was done to get those really bad situations. We had people on tight tanks, for example, who were, some of them people went bankrupt trying to pump out the tight tanks to keep from losing their home. Moving on to 2010, the second phase of the sewage treatment plant came into place, which would have been done earlier, but because of the recession and some other financial issues that happened, it was delayed. The 2018 Annual Town Meeting voted to add those two additional and last tanks to fill out the capacity we originally had been designing for and get all that last bit of nitrogen and wastewater collected and treated properly and discharged to the ground. So here we are, 2023, with the last piece of the sewage treatment plant, which is the final disposal area, which is going to be at what's called the Davis site. It's located near the META station layover area. I'll get into that in more detail in a minute. So this just reiterates the existing conditions. We had raw sewage flowing regularly into Rocky Nook in the years we just described. Shelfish beds had been closed all the way out through the entire harbor, including Plymouth Harbor. The Gray's Beach was closed a lot of time because of this raw sewage flowing around. No investment was made in Gray's Beach because of that. Improvements to homes and businesses in the areas that were affected by this sewage problem, public health problem, environmental problem, couldn't have any investments, banks wouldn't lend the money, they couldn't do anything. We were kind of locked into a serious situation. And the Lower Jones River and the environmental impact of that was also significant. After putting the sewers in and getting the initial problems resolved, we now have... we now have all these serious public health problems have been averted. The home values in the area, particularly Rocky Nook, Adena, and the main corridor along 3A, have been significantly improved. Investments have been made. I'd like to point out that just about every restaurant except two that I could think of are on the sewer. And they've been able to grow and prosper because of that. There's been some expansion as well recently. The only two that aren't are up by me by Route 27. There's a Dunkin' Donuts and there's a pizza place, but that's it. Commercial property along Route 3A was also allowed to expand and grow within the property they already had. And that was a significant improvement for our tax base. This slide shows the current shellfish beds of Kingston, Duxbury, and Plymouth. And in the red is areas that are closed. You can see that some of the area, still the Lower Jones River is closed. Then the area outside of that, there's a conditional approval. If it rains too much or whatever, those beds are closed. And then there's the open area that you see. In the bottom, you see that Plymouth Harbor is closed. The reason for that is they continue to have a wastewater discharge into the harbor. So Division Marine Fisheries and DEP closed that. Prior to the sewer treatment plant being put in, that whole area was closed. And the area up into Duxbury Bay was conditional. It's important to note that we have Island Creek Oysters now as a major oyster production business. And in Kingston, we have, I think, four shellfish, oyster, shellfish grants that are flourishing. That wouldn't have happened without the sewer treatment plant, but we're not done. We still have a lot of work to do. That's why those areas are conditionally open, because we still have septic systems, sewers, septic systems and cesspools and the like that are still in place that need to be added to our treatment plant, but we do not have the capacity. That's why we built those last two tanks. This map represents the existing sewer that was put in place. The red lines being the major sewer lines. That was put in in 2001, 2003, the end of it. They have not changed and they will not be expanded any more than they are on that plan. The areas around them that have hooked up are directly abutting them. And there are side streets that still need to be infilled because they have demand to get this, the failed septic systems or the poorly maintained septic systems or whatever, because of the sewers are so bad. People have been waiting to get into the sewer until we had capacity. That's an important point to note. We are only going to have sewer connections for the plan that was done back in the late 1990s. That facility plan is a very important document, and the EIR that went with it is a very important document. We will not be expanding. I know some people have asked us about what's going on at Sacred Heart, not even on the page. We're not going in, we're not doing that at all. That's all new, and that'll be done privately. Anything outside this area will be all done with its own funds, its own septic system, its own wastewater treatment plant, whatever it is. We're confined to just this area. The next slide just kind of zeroes in on where the wastewater treatment plant is. I think everybody knows it's at the transfer station. The two tanks, if you've been up there, you see the two tanks. They come right out towards the driveway into the facility. The existing leaching fields, which are always meant to be backup, have been used unfortunately for 24 years, going on 25 years. They were initially planned to be used intermittently for winter disposal of treated wastewater. And the other six or seven or eight months they were going to be used, the treated wastewater we had from the plant was going to be used for irrigation of the Indian Point, I mean, the Indian Point, the nuclear power plant, the Indian Pond's golf course. At the last minute, that opportunity for us was cut off. Fortunately, we had the leaching beds ready to go, and we were able to use those. But the new leaching fields we have were always meant to be that, for the capacity of the existing, the full buildout of the treatment plant. And they're critical to going forward. The next slide, please. This is the letter that I just learned about today, but we had voted, there was a request to the Sewer Commission last week, I believe it is, at our meeting, about connecting to a, I think it's a potential 40B project. And we basically told them at that time we don't have capacity. And I'm going to get into that a little bit more because it's critical, again, to the bottom line of this article. This next slide, this is the actual locate, this is a design, a plan view of where the leaching fields are going to be. You see the, that greenish area, there's multiple cells for different components of the leaching field. And the location is just below that, you'll see the layover area for the MBTA trains. It's not the station itself, but it's the part that goes way back where the trains spend overnight or use for maintenance. And then the north part of it is Indian Pond itself. This is the area that will take the entire treated capacity of the wastewater treatment plant. And the fields that are now being used are going to be, not abandoned, but they're going to be rested for a considerable amount of time. So with that, I think it's important to just see if there's any questions. And I have a couple other points I'd like to add.
Are you done with your presentation?
Right now, yes.
Well, what other points would you like to make?
Okay. The first point is, a lot of issues have been raised, brought to me in my eight weeks of getting immersed in this situation since August 1st. And I've tried to listen to everybody. I've met with every board and elected board and appointed board in town. Continually, there's been a kind of a mismatch of things, but they come down to this expansion question. And two points I want to make. One is, as I pointed out in the slide, the system as it exists is as large it's going to be. The capacity we have has already been accounted for by the review of lots that were in this zone. And only those lots are going to be allowed into the sewer. The sewer users pay for everything with either betterments for the capital costs or for the user fees. So there is no capacity for any kind of expansion outside of what was, what currently is zoned. We just don't have it. And one of the things we're going to do in the next couple of meetings of the Sewer Commission is to codify that exact point. When I was here at the beginning of this whole process, that's how we set up the plan. And somehow that has gotten lost in translation. So I took the, I'm taking the position with the, with the commission, that we're going to codify that and identify the remaining capacity, whatever there is, and make sure it's clear that it's for the existing lots as they're zoned and only for the capacity that they have today. So what that means is if someone comes in with a lot looking for a 120-unit whatever, and they need 60,000 gallons of capacity, but that lot only could have had at the most, as it's zoned, 2,000, they are not going to get any capacity allotment from us. It's not in the environmental impact statements. It's not in the facility plan we approved. It's not what DEP expected. It's not going to happen. That's probably the most important point. Any other questions?
Sir?
I believe he was first.
I'll give you time.
Okay.
Give it back. He gave it back.
Brad Randall, 10 Gray's Beach Road. I have a few questions. So first of all, are we voting on an amendment and then the article? So there's two things?
So the motion was moved as, you have motions that are printed in your informational warrant, but those aren't necessarily what get moved the night of town meeting. So to make it cleaner, if the proponent of any particular article foresaw something and wanted to amend their article, so alter, don't use the word amend, alter their article, they just move it the way they want it. And you're voting on the article as Elaine had spoken, which was printed up on the screen. And it shows the strikeouts just for clarity purposes, so you see what she struck out. So you're moving on that motion as she read it. Does that make sense?
Well, not really, because in the warrant, it's printed the, without the strikeouts.
Right. So, so there's a difference. So the article is what gets printed in the warrant, and that's what we're bound by in terms of scope, right? And then any modifications, just like any member of the public, can come up and make a motion. So long as it's within the scope, it's allowable to amend an article. And here, just to be cleaner, the way Elaine moved it was as she wanted it amended, as she wanted it presented to the meeting. And that's the, the better approach, rather than making a motion and amending it in the first instance.
Okay. My question would be then, you know, if the Sewer Commission was listening to what people wanted at the last town meeting, why wasn't this printed without any strike throughs? Why did it have to be changed at all? So, okay, no answer for that. But my next question is, are you saying?
Hold on, hold on, hold on.
Yes, okay, sure. Yeah.
I'm not sure I understand the question.
Because we've been listening since last town meeting, and as Brian said, he's been out talking to everybody in all boards, committees, residents, everybody for the last eight weeks as we have. And we heard you. I mean, we did our best we could, and we amended the article based on all the feedback that we were getting up until this past weekend. So it's, we hope it's acceptable to the body here tonight because we are in a situation where we have no leaching fields if something happens.
Okay. And the third question, so are you saying that right now, as it stands right now, you're having to turn people away for developments in Kingston because we don't have capacity?
We're not turning people away from developments at all. We're turning, we have people on hold who have paid betterments, waiting for a decade or more to hook up. But we did not have the capacity to allow them in. We can't have capacity, we can't have flow coming in and no place to put it. That's critical. I mean, that makes sense, I think, but that's, that's where we are. We're bringing those other two tanks online, but we need this leaching field immediately, as soon as we can get it. We're already on borrowed time with the one that's here. We have a small amount of capacity on emergency basis we can use. But if this leaching field fails, we have a whole different problem.
Can I, can I make a comment, moderator?
Go ahead.
Okay. Well, it sounds to me like without this passing, development is a lot harder in Kingston, which, what a shame. If you heard us at the last meeting, we said no. I honestly think when people talk about what's going wrong in Kingston, that this is what they're talking about. Someone says no to something, and then three months later, they bring it right back, hoping for a different crowd. If you're listening to the town, listen to us when we say no.
Can I answer that, please?
No, 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 no. Bye. Go ahead, sir. I'll give you a chance. Let's get one more question. Yes, sir.
I would like to move to amendment 15.
Name?
Robert from Copper Beach Drive. I would like to move to amend Article 15 to include the following. The Office of Sewer Commission and Waste Water Department shall not approve sewer connection applications for parcels outside the proposed sewer
Excuse me, sir. Do you have, is that written down? Do you want to bring it up and Town Council can look at it?
Sure.
And then you can just Yeah, after he reads it, he's going to give you a copy. And we just need that copy after you read it for the record. Close to the mic, please.
Absolutely. So I move to amend Article 15 to add the following. The Office of the Sewer Commission and Waste Water Department shall not approve sewer connection applications for parcels outside the proposed sewerings parcels indicated in maps contained in the comprehensive wastewater management plan, CWMP, as prepared by CDM Smith and presented to the town on July 26, 2022, entitled, quote, "Proposed Sewering at Buildout MEP and/or Proposed Sewering at Buildout with Town and Country Mobile Estates Sewer."
Does he have a second? Yep. So this is the motion to amend. We're not, so we're stepping away from 15 as printed in the warrant, and we're going to now debate the amendment. Are we going to amend this? Then we're going to vote on the amendment. Then we'll get back to Article 15. We're still in Article 15, but we're doing the amendment first. So everyone in line, we're debating the amendment. Elaine, the mic is yours.
I just have two questions. One, Brian, is the map he's reading the one you put up here?
I'm not sure.
So I don't know what map. And my second question is to Town Council, if I may, can we do that? If we can, you know?
I mean, it's a question of scope for the moderator, and I would defer to the moderator, but the
Actually, it's more, can the Sewer Commission is not extend? I mean, is that within our authority? If we put it into our rules and regulations, can we honor that?
Well, so what, what happens with an amendment of the Sewer Commission bylaw would be a town meeting vote to extend that overlay district. So that would be required by town meeting, but it would be presented presumably by the Sewer Commission. So I think that's the intention of the amendment as pertains to developments in general. Did you hear what I said?
No.
She wasn't listening. She wasn't listening. I'll repeat it again. So, so essentially, I believe your, your sewer commission, your sewer overlay district was created through a bylaw. Is that writing, Elaine? Or was it a special act?
Oh, a special act.
Okay. So the Sewer Commission, what the intent of that would be is the Sewer Commission wouldn't present to town meeting an article to amend the special legislation. Because remember, the only way to get special legislation through to the state is via a town meeting vote. So if you wanted to clarify, well, you can't bind the future town meetings, but you could bind the Sewer Commission for presenting and proposing special legislation. It's not in the Sewer Commission's authority to extend special legislation in any event. Do you understand?
Yes, I understand everything can be overwritten by town vote, but that is the intent.
Right. So the Sewer Commission couldn't unilaterally just at its sewer commission meeting change the special legislation anyway.
She's saying they can't already. They already can't do
Right. But this is now codify, this is now codifying what is being said in this discussion into Article 15. into article 15.
Right, so what he's trying to say is that the sewer commission will not make a proposal to town meeting to amend special legislation. That said, the Board of Selectmen can propose a warrant article to amend special legislation. Ten citizens at an annual town meeting could petition the town meeting to change the special legislation, and all of that then gets sent to the legislature if this, if the town meeting in some future date were wanting and approved that to go to the general court, which is the legislature. Does that make sense? So they can't do it anyway at a sewer commission meeting.
Okay.
If that makes sense. So if that influences someone's vote, I don't know, but what they're saying is that the sewer commission will not present legislation.
For town meeting's approval. Got it?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes, I understand that, but again, there's been a lot of discussion here that has been sidebar of article 15 itself, and I would just like to make sure that the maps that are included in this, are those maps included in... in their presentation?
The map is what he's referring to as a comprehensive wastewater management plan that we needed to produce for DEP in order to, ours was over 20 years old, it was 25 years old. So as part of this project, they asked us to complete a new waste, comprehensive wastewater management plan. So that's the map he's referring to, is what's in the comprehensive wastewater management plan. Now, I don't know, Brian, if that includes the areas that you speak of.
That's easy. Those plans are not ever gonna be used under this existing wastewater treatment facility. That's exactly what I was talking about. This study for nitrogen has confused a lot of people. It goes way beyond where this sewage treatment plant capacity and existing sewers are. Anything that goes beyond that, all these pink areas that are on the map, that's for some other sewage treatment plant that the town meeting's gonna have to deal with at a future time. It's not what we're talking about tonight. Hope that's clear.
Hold on, we're gonna put up the map, and I'd ask you to turn around and look at it. This is the map, sir. You agree this is the map?
No.
Okay, well, that's the problem. I don't know what that is, it means nothing to me, so unless you have a printed map.
The map he's showing is a comprehensive wastewater management plan again, and that was DEP wanted us, wanted us to identify areas outside of the existing sewer lines, expanding it more than what Brian's recommending, I should say stating, by identifying nitrogen areas. They made us address nitrogen in our report, as they should, and that included abutting properties of the, outside of the existing sewer lines. That actually would expand us, would expand it. What Brian has submitted and shown up here is less, those pink areas on that map is additional homes to be added that aren't in the plan that Brian showed up above.
Okay. So if I may retract my motion?
You're retracting your motion.
Yes.
Motion's been withdrawn. Now we're back to article 15, and next up is you.
Jean Coleman, 20 Howland Lane. I think it's great that you heard some of our concerns, but I guess my concern is, the warrant was due by September 12, and it was approved by the Board of Selectmen since September 12 with the original article as presented. This is the first day that, I know that myself, that I've seen these strike throughs presented just like what Mr. Randall just said. So I guess I'm wondering, when you decided to listen to us? Was it when all of a sudden Facebook started to get loud again this week, or was it six months ago when we voted it down? That's question number one.
Jean, Jean, just ask a question, not...
It is a question.
When, when did they make the amendment?
When did you make the amendment?
Elaine, when did you make the amendment?
Thank you.
I'm not, we're not doing Facebook here.
Thank you. We made, we amended the amendments, we were starting on these amendments in August when Brian got on board. He brought new, new thoughts and ideas to the commission, and like I said, we've been amending it constantly, trying to tweak it, so it's been ongoing. It's ongoing, and Brian brought a lot to, to the table and helped us get to where we are right now.
Okay, my second question is, since this no longer includes the infrastructure to support the wastewater treatment plant, I'm wondering why it's still $13 million? Wouldn't the infrastructure be the majority of the cost for this article?
The, the cost for the original, the cost at the annual town meeting was approximately 11 and a half, $12 million. Since we're gonna be in, we've escalated that, you know, everybody sees escalation, so we've brought that in to 13, kept it at $13 million to address the escalation, and we refined the article to say it's just getting water from the existing wastewater treatment plant up to the new leaching fields, period. Nothing else.
Okay, thank you. And my third question, this is a little deceiving, where I don't know if everyone else picked up the special article handout, but it says right on there, there are no costs to taxpayers, but then sewer users pay all the costs. I am a sewer user and a taxpayer, but I understand, because I do pay a betterment, $36 a month, anyone that's in the NOOK does. When we went to finance our mortgage, the mortgage company actually had to approve that the town had this additional, the lien against the property for the betterment that had not yet been paid. And one of the things you'll see a lot in real estate listings is mentions of a betterment that is to be paid by a seller, or a betterment that still needs to be paid. So if you're buying a property that's on any of these sewer lines, you are either assuming the betterment, or it needs to be paid off by closing in order for your mortgage company to assume the loan, unless they say that it can come second to the town. For instance, if you default on your mortgage, the town gets paid first, not the, not the mortgage, because it's a betterment and it's, it goes first against the property. But I guess my question is, does this affect current sewer users at all? That's my final question.
The, excuse me. This, the payment for this will be paid for with betterments and with the user fees for mainly the betterments that are gonna be added, and existing betterments that we have in hand, and that'll be worked out as we go through this with our accountants, with the towns' accountants and the treasurer's office, because this'll be a 30-year note, and that, so we have, we're gonna have a process, just like we've done for the last 25 years, to pay that off. As you said, when you have a sale of a property, depending on who the mortgage company or the bank is, they're gonna take it a different tack. The bottom line is, we have to get paid to pay off the note we borrowed, and that's just the way it is.
I guess for clarification, I'm just asking, will it change my current sewer betterment as I'm currently a sewer user?
At this time, no.
Thank you.
It may, depending on grants we may be getting. I'm sorry, you...
Thank you, Elaine, I actually appreciate your honesty. Thank you.
Let me put it this, the grants means it'll go down. If we get grants, it'll go down. It's not going up.
Ma'am?
Hi, Jean Landis-Nomen, 84 Wolf Pond Road. I just want to be sure I'm understanding what's being presented here tonight. This is not a proposal to extend the line, the main lines beyond where they are now, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, so it's up to the planning board and the ZBA to determine if any additional building will be permitted in the mandated sewer area?
No, no, it's...
Well, can you, can the sewer commission approve planning?
No, we're not, no.
No, so it's up to the planning board and the ZBA?
Correct, no, yeah, correct, absolutely, yeah.
Okay, all right. All the wastewater from the sewage plant has to be filtered through a leaching field, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, so the current leaching fields were put in use in 1998. Based on what I've read and what you've said tonight, they have an average expected life of 20 to 30 years, so they're now at least 22 to 23 years old, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, so we have, if they fail, we currently have no backup?
Correct.
Which means that everyone's sewer is gonna back up who's on the sewer line, and it's gonna pollute all the land around them. Is that correct?
It's not gonna back up, it's gonna break out of the surface of the ground at the leaching fields, and yeah, it's gonna be going down the street.
Okay, so right now, based on what Elaine said, we are gonna qualify for a low-interest loan, and it seems like there are some federal and state grants that we can qualify for?
Yes.
How soon will we know?
That will depend, that will depend on getting the application in. We can't apply unless we have a reason for it.
Okay, so that would depend on tonight's vote, is that correct? Okay, so you're, you just answered, Ms. Coleman, saying that the loan is gonna be paid off by the current sewer users.
Right.
And how long will it take? Let's say you get a positive vote tonight, how soon would these new leaching fields be completed? Just approximately.
The current design estimate with CDM is about a year from the beginning to the end. I have had several conversations with them to expedite this process, and my goal with the sewer commission, I know we're talking about this, is to basically have at least half the field operational, which takes care of the Indian Pond Estates capacity, that 300 something thousand gallons, no later than this next summer, June, and then the rest of it will come online, which is not currently needed right after that, so they have time to do it. That's the goal right now, to shorten that one year down to basically six months.
Okay, just for part of it, but if...
Just for part of it, because it's a huge, it's a huge project.
Okay, so the current leaching field handles tanks one and two, and these, and this is the leaching field that's old, getting old.
The field, yeah, the field at Indian Pond Estates.
Okay, and your proposal tonight is to start building new leaching fields...
You gotta wrap it up.
...to take over when these start to fail, is that correct?
Not when they start to fail, immediately, as soon as we can get them in, we do not want them to fail.
You're running out of time.
Okay, all right. I think my questions have been answered.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Sure.
My name's Doug Gaboni, 45 Howland Lane. I'll be as brief as possible. As far as the 2,000 gallons, the aforementioned 2,000, it was 2,000 gallons per lot, correct? You said is already figured into our sewer capacity?
Whatever the lots were zoned for, yeah.
Okay, so to, not to get too granular here, the 48 Howland Lane lot was divided into five single-family lots, which have yet to be built upon. Are those figured into that 2,000 gallon apiece capacity?
The sewer commissioners have already spoken with that developer and allocated only enough capacity for five single-family homes.
Okay, so if we were to expand upon the sewer system and do the repairs and the upgrades that are proposed tonight, could that change? Or are they locked into that 2,000 gallons lot?
I think that's a legal question, so let's go to town council.
I mean, what kind of change would you, what are you suggesting?
Oh, I'm not suggesting a change, I'm just curious of what the actual status quo is.
Are you suggesting, are you saying a 40B, is that what you're saying? Like, just for hypothetical?
Yes, hypothetically, that's what I'm asking. And hypothetically, I think that's what a lot of people are in the room for right now. But with that being said, I'm just wondering if when we say that that's ruled, and then you would use the term codify, that makes me think, it's like, okay, well, that's it as of now, but if there is a need to codify at that point, it doesn't sound like it's a, you know, cut and dry, done deal.
Well, for... An A and R from the, as a 40B, or as a five lot? Okay, so A and Rs are meant to lock in zoning, et cetera, for various reasons, but the elephant in the room is the 40B that everyone's concerned about. The reality is, 40B projects have a lot of flexibility, right? And they go to the ZBA, the ZBA can waive all kinds of things, some of which they can try not to waive, and, and, or they say, we're not going to waive, and the Housing Appeals Board says, well, you have to waive that, that's an unreasonable thing to do. That said, sewer is a little bit different. So it's still waivable by the ZBA, but there's a lot of case law from that Housing Appeals Board that says, and particularly in coastal communities, so there have been Martha's Vineyard cases, Nantucket cases, where the Housing Appeals Board have said, it's legitimate for the ZBA not to waive that because of these capacity issues. And particularly, and that's why this gentleman, Bob, right, Bob? Brian, sorry, Brian, why Brian indicated that the board is going to prioritize who has capacity allocation, right? And the Housing Appeals Board has said, that's perfectly fine when you prioritize, say, environment, having to deal with nitrogen levels, and so your existing users, you don't want the nitrogen spilling into bodies of water, which creates algae brooms and all of those things. So the Housing Appeals Board, unlike other things where you say, well, not the setback, you know, and they say, forget it, you, you have to waive that, they don't say you have to waive this sewer capacity issue. The other interesting piece, so long answer to a short question.
Which I appreciate, thank you.
Oh, you're welcome. So the other interesting thing that the Housing Appeals Board has decided, it was a wall pole case, where they said, if it's a public way, so owned by the town, and the sewer main runs within that public way, the town has a property right, just like I have a property right in my house, the town of Kingston has a property right in the streets, and you can't force the, someone to be able to construct on your property. So the Housing Appeals Board has said, that's okay to deny on those grounds too, provided you're not saying, okay, everybody but 40B can construct in the road and build a sewer. If you're treating 40B applicants differently than the rest of the world, then they're not gonna uphold that.
But a 40B applicant wouldn't be applying for the same thing that the current five single-family lots are on the market for. It'd be two different things.
Well, they would be perhaps applying for an extension or whatever, I don't know what they would be applying for, but when there are capacity issues, it's legitimate not to waive that, that, that right to the 40Bs, so that you can deny development of a 40B, a 40B based on that reason, okay?
All right, it's, and also...
And the housing appeals, sorry, Sean just asked me a question. The Housing Appeals Board is where a 40B applicant goes if they are dissatisfied with the decision of the town. They say, oh, the conditions are too stringent, or whatever, then they appeal to that body, it's like a state administrative body.
All right, so, and my final question, and thank you very much for that answer, it was detailed, I appreciate it. So there was a traffic study that's gone on the last two weeks, so the timing of everything is quite interesting. No doubt this has to happen, but I think it's, it's a question of when. These five, these five lots are on the market down in Rocky Nook right now, and if they sell them, we don't have to worry about expansion. That's all I'm saying, is we wait a little bit, hopefully they get gone, Rocky Nook doesn't get overrun, everyone gets a sewer, everybody wins. But, you know, this doesn't sound like a guarantee, and I know you can't guarantee it, and I understand that, 40B is 40B, but that's a, yeah, that's that. You've answered all my questions, thank you very much.
Yes, sir.
Hi, my name is Bob Klosker, 55 South Street. I am also a member of the Board of Water Commissioners. Arguably, the most important resource we have in town is water. The water that you get out of your faucet, all of it is pumped from wells underground and are impacted by pollution from septic systems. Should the septic, the leaching field that we currently have fail, that leaching field is very close to our, two of our largest wells, if that fails and we have to close those wells, we are on the verge of a catastrophic problem for Kingston water. We cannot get water faster, we cannot build a new well fast enough to replace the water that we would lose from those two wells. Two of our three biggest wells are not far from where the failed leaching fields would be. We have an engineer who's spent his entire life doing this work. He's the one that set up the initial sewer system, and he came back in August to help fix this. the initial sewer system, and he came back in August to help fix this. Are you going to look at the professionals who know what they're talking about, or are you going to speculate about what might happen if somebody else moves into town, and for some reason or another, somebody changes a rule? We need to fix this, and we need to fix it now.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
My name is Ralph Calderaro, 57 Evergreen Street. I just have a very simple question. What motion are we acting on? The revised motion or the amendment?
Article 15 in the handout, a single piece of paper that says amended.
Okay, in the book, which is-
Not in the book, it's a piece of paper. Single piece of paper.
I picked up-
Revised motion, sorry.
Okay. Does it say at the top, Article 15 amendment?
Yes.
Okay. That's the answer. Thank you.
No, that's what I have.
Revised motion.
Mine's amendment.
Hold on, Ralph, forget it.
Well, it's the same.
There is a problem.
This is the one you just gave me earlier. Yeah, it's the same, right?
This is what we were...
Yeah. She read, yes. Can you go give the gentleman a copy of that?
Okay, all right. If this single, single page is the actual motion, then there is a problem. There is a problem. There is a problem because when she gave the motion, she deleted below at about four, four lines from the bottom, "On new users." It should be deleted. Both his and her discussion specifically said there would be no users as a result of this motion.
Elaine, good.
The motion I read does have that deletion. That, again, we've been tweaking this. That motion I read set, has "on new users" deleted, stricken out. It's not what says in the handout.
Okay.
My motion deletes it.
Just so long as the official motion has that language contained in it.
That's what I read, yes.
Thank you very much.
I got everything, but don't worry.
So, this line that I'm...
Just "on new users," three, three words have been stricken. They weren't read.
"On new users" was stricken. Not read, not part of this. Thank you, sir, for pointing that out. New information only now, something new.
For clarification, can the Sewer Commission extend the sewer beyond the town line?
Can what?
Can they be on line?
Going back again to the original facility plan, the answer is absolutely not.
Thank you. I have paid off my betterment. Will I be assessed a new betterment based on approval of this article?
Depending on how our grants and funding goes, there's a possibility, yes. Thank you.
Pine Dubois, 93 Elm Street in Kingston. I just want to beg the town meeting to approve the article and understand that currently, we are title 5D under the Federal Clean Water Act for the entirety of the Jones River from Silver Lake to Kingston Bay, and that the study that was done says 75% of the nitrogen in the river is from our septic systems, and the other 25% is from the fertilizer and the cranberry bog, fertilizer we're putting on the lawns and the cranberry bogs. There is no way out of this. We absolutely need new soil to put the wastewater in, in order to protect the environment that we have and to improve and clean up our waste. There is no other way to do it. It's a great location. I implore you to pass the article.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am?
Hi, Suzanne Hagerty, 15 School Street. Just a quick comment. I mean, we've had a piece of paper, an article, and another man come up to speak. It's pretty confusing, to be honest with you. I don't know if anyone really fully understands which article we're voting on. Just a, just an assessment. But also, it says here-
Hold on, we're going to, we're going to stop, we're going to pause. Elaine, can you reread the motion into the record so everybody has it?
Thank you.
You're welcome, ma'am.
Move the town appropriate $13 million to pay costs of designing, constructing, equipping, and furnishing leaching fields to support the reduction of nitrogen levels in town, including but not limited to the construction and/or reconstruction of related pump stations, the extension of related sewer lines necessary to connect the wastewater treatment plant to the leaching fields, the acquisition of any easements in land necessary to complete the improvements described above, and the payment of all other costs incidental and related, therefore, and to, in that to meet this appropriation, the treasurer, with the approval of the selectmen, is authorized to borrow this amount under, pursuant to Mass. General Law, Chapter 44, Section 8, 14, or pursuant to any other enabling authority, and to issue bonds or notes of the town. Therefore, that the board of selectmen is authorized to contract for and expend any federal or state aid available for the project. That all or any portion of the amount authorized to be borrowed by this vote may be borrowed through Massachusetts Clean Water Trust, the trust, and any appropriate official or officials of the town are hereby authorized to execute any agreement with the trust and the Department of Environmental Protection, the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. That may be required in connection with any such loan obtained through the trust. While the debt issued pursuant to the authority of this vote will be general obligation of the town pursuant to the general laws, it is the town's intent that the debt service on such debt be paid in the first instance from a combination of state and federal grants, betterment assessments, and connection fees, except to the extent any treatment capacity is reserved for town purposes, in which case the portion of the annual debt service proportional to the amount of treatment capacity reserved for town purposes during that same annual period shall be payable in the first instance from the general fund.
Thank you.
Thank you. My second part of the question is, have you already determined the land that you're going to acquire as part of this improvement? It's already acquired? Okay.
Yeah, the land's been acquired in previous town meeting, and we're just getting ready to use it.
Okay. What is the address of that?
The address of the land?
Yeah.
I think I showed you the picture up there, but the, it's, it's adjacent to the MBTA layover station.
Okay. Excellent. Thank you.
Great. Uh, Sheila.
Oh, for Brian. So, I was going to talk in here.
Yep.
So, when we had a select meeting, if anybody watched that meeting, I just want to know that, like, Brian spent a good over an hour speaking to us. And again, I was not in favor of it for the first time that it came to town meeting. I am now. I think they did an amazing job speaking to us at the selectmen's meeting, if you did watch it, to explain the situation that we are in. I think Brian, in his millions of years in experience, really did change my mind. And just to let you know, that this is exponentially important, because we act 25 years, and I don't want Indian Pond to have sewage going down its streets. And this is really to let this actually settle and, and to turn this off for a while, because there, there is no more space in there to be able to get that out of the leaching field. But, to be honest, if we don't do this now, we're going to lose the money, and then we're going to be on the hook for much more time. So, Brian, I don't know if you can just real quickly about, about the state funding and how we're going to go back in line on Tuesday if this doesn't go through.
Thanks a lot. I was going to bring that up, actually. It's important, as we've said, as Elaine said earlier, we're going to lose our priority status if we don't have this passed today, because the, our deadline is October 31st, Halloween. Wouldn't you guess it? So, we have, we had one more shot at the apple. The way the state works is, you get lined up and do a lot of work to get into a priority level, so that when, and if the town meeting votes, they're ready to give you the money and go through that process. If you don't take it after the second shot, which we are at now, we go back down the bottom. So, that means we have two problems. We're going to get, if we have to do this sooner than later, it's not through the trust fund at 2%, it's at whatever the market rate for bonds are that day. And if the field fails, we're going to fix the fields that are failing. At the same time, we're trying to do new fields to take the flow that we're trying to get to today. So, we have two problems financially instead of one.
Thank you. Sir, can I have your question, please? Or comments?
Yeah. Pete Wilson, 26 Maple Street. A question about the financing as far as state and federal grants. Is it my understanding that usually federal money comes through, and there's an 80/20 split, depending on the grants and the applications, right? Local versus what the feds give us. So, this authorizes us to get state and federal grant money using the $13 million oblig, you know, borrowing. So, therefore, if this doesn't go through, any chance of getting federal money will be, our share of the federal money will basically, like, our portion of it won't be feasible just because of general town finance. Is that correct?
I can't answer that one.
But, maybe I'll answer it this way. 100% of the money we're going to get is going to this process.
Right.
Other federal programs I'm not familiar with, on the 80/20 split, a lot of those tend to be like roadways and that kind of thing. We're not talking about that. This Water Pollution Baitment Trust is 100% loan at a very low interest rate, and it's, it's a very successful problem, program. It has been for a long time.
Sure. But earlier Elaine said, depending on this vote, there'd be potentially a decrease in the cost of the project because of federal money and grants.
Correct. Worst case, this, I should say, best case, this passes. 100% of it will come from this low-interest loan. If we are able to secure additional grants from federal estate, that will reduce our obligation of the 13 million.
Okay. But if this doesn't pass, that's not a possibility?
Nothing's a possibility if this doesn't pass. Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
If your question is to move this, I don't see anyone else at the microphone, but if you have a question, fire away. But if not, I'm going to move it.
John Creed for Bayberry Lane. I move the question.
So, I've predetermined to move that, so I'm going to pretend I didn't hear that. I'm moving this to a vote, so we don't have to take a vote. I'm moving the question. You've had the material, you've read this. We're probably going to have to count it.
I wouldn't work in my way of...
Oh, you're working in my way of...
The question's been moved. You weren't, you weren't in line. No.
No.
So, there's no report of the deal?
The question-
Do you want to deal with this from before, in these before and...
Sir, you're, you can't. You, you did this at the last meeting. I know you live there. I know what affects you. This is the meeting. I can't, you can't just come up and speak. You're out of order. Could you sit down, please?
We'll do.
Thank you, sir. We're going to take a vote on this. All those in favor of Article 15, as read by Elaine and printed on the screen, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay.
Nay.
I believe it passes, but I'm going to count it just in case. So, can you take out your cards? All those in favor, can you hold your card up, please?
Hold on, yeah, your card out.
What's that mean?
Right?
No, that's me.
He didn't have an opportunity.
What did you say?
52 and 33.
Oops. Yep.
30.
30. And all those opposed, can you take your cards out, raise them high, wave them around?
So, two thirds.
What's two thirds then?
Yeah.
Need the two thirds of a deal.
Which was 18.
23. 12.
I think it's going to be close.
Yep.
I think it passes.
I think that was a pass, but seven tracks, so that's 45.
can tell me my math's wrong, it passes.
Woo-hoo!
Hold on. Hold on. I just got to check the math real quick.
They needed 107.
What?
They needed 107.
They needed 107, and they got 115.
Yep.
Yep, that's what I did, too.
Because 45 divided by 115 is 40.
Take, take two divided by three.
Next article.
Yeah. That's what, I had 107, too.
16? Nope, we've got to move on.
Good job, Brian.
I know. Who's presenting? 16?
16. Silver Lake.
Silver Lake. Go ahead.
That's right there.
Good evening. Mark Gaboni, 15 Old Orchard Lane, Silver Lake Regional School Committee representative tonight with Article 16. Move the town vote to accept a vacant parcel of property identified as Map 8, Lot 40, consisting of .19 acres on Lake Street from the Silver Lake Regional School District for general government purposes.
Would you like to say anything?
This particular parcel is between Old Lake Street and Lake Street, and it's adjacent to the beginning flow of the Jones River out of Silver Lake. This piece of property has been declared by the Regional School Committee by unanimous vote as surplus. The town of Kingston's conservation agent, who I'll let you, let's speak to this better of what they're going to do with it, expressed an interest to the Silver Lake Regional School Committee to use the property for drainage improvements, fish ladders, I believe, and, and other town purposes.
Okay. Would anyone like to be heard in debate?
For it.
I don't know what you just said or did, but it's not heard.
Valerie Massard, Town Planner, One Schofield Road. Matt is out sick today. So, I just offer that it has to do with doing some repairs of the culvert on Lake Street, and it's an important change that we make this motion.
Okay, thank you.
Just to give you a location of the art of the land, it's the, if you're familiar with Lake Street next to the athletic fields and the divide that made Old Lake Street and Lake Street, it's the little triangle that's left and stranded in the middle that the town needs in order to take the culvert out, put a natural river there again, and improve the stormwater coming off of Lake Street, and it will do great things for the river and everybody else.
Awesome. Thank you. Let's take a vote. All those in favor, is Article 16 as printed, two thirds, sorry. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. 21.
All right. Move the town vote to amend the town of Kingston zoning bylaws by amending Section 10 Administration, 10 dot 3, site plan review, 10 dot 3 dot B, submission procedure, paragraph 10 dot 3 dot B dot 3, to add subsection J as printed in the warrant, which adds the Affordable Housing Trust to the distribution list for site plan review, and to allow for the town clerk to renumber the zoning bylaws as needed to incorporate these changes. So, essentially-
Hold on. I have a memorandum from the planning board. Is this when I was supposed to read this, Gloria? At their regularly scheduled meeting on October 16th, 2023, the planning board recommended favorable action to support zoning article... Are we on 21? 21, at a special town meeting, to add Affordable Housing Trust to site plan review distribution list on residential plans only. 300 favorable vote. Board of Selectmen, 5-0. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries unanimously. 22.
Article 22. Move to see if the town will vote to amend the general bylaws to insert the following new article and to allow the town clerk to renumber the general bylaw to include the new chapter or take any action relative there to Chapter 26, temporary repairs to private ways as written in the warrant.
I'm going to defer over to Val, is any deep questions on this? And this is really to address longstanding issues with private ways and how the town deals with accepting repairs and all the magnitude that goes into it. It's been a big part of the discussion over the past few years, how the town handles private ways, but I'm going to defer over to our town planner, Valerie, to go a little deeper into it.
Thank you. Again, Valerie Massard, Town Planner, 1 Schofield Road. Just offer that currently law does not allow the town to expend public funds on private roads. This is a, an amendment that would allow for the town to help facilitate improvements on private roads only through vote of town meeting and the road commissioners, the selectmen. It creates a process that doesn't exist now, and it allows for betterments on major improvements, which would include reconstruction of sidewalks, resurfacing, or drainage. And it allows the possibility, and only the possibility, that there might be repair of a pothole or something like that if town meeting were to vote favorably on a minor modification to a private way. So, this is just to enable private roads to have some facilitation and coordination with the town in trying to do their maintenance and upkeep of their ways.
Anyone from the Finance Committee want to give a statement where you are not in favor of this?
Carl Pike, Finance Committee. Yes, we had quite a long discussion on this, and I would say that our major reason was that we feel that it somewhat could open up Pandora's Box, that it's easy to say that the intent is that we would not be spending any significant town funds on these roads without going to town meeting for approval. However, we feel that we should not be doing this type of thing, allowing where judgment would come into play, that we would, people would get a phone call, the building's people or whoever, to do this, do that, and we just felt that it was better to leave well enough alone, that we have a process for approving streets, and we prefer to stay that way.
Jim?
Mr. Moderator, this is just a comment on the article. Are you taking the comments at this point?
I love comments. I prefer comments. Yes, go ahead.
Okay. My question, and I will reiterate what Carl Pike just said, Jim Sewell, 51 Indian Pond Road, just to be clear. There was a whole section in the handout prior to town meeting for the warrant that offered a whole bunch of questions to this article in red, and none of the questions were answered. The answer that was given back in the responses said, "Read the documentation," and none of the specific questions that were asked, and I assume they're from the Finance Committee, were answered. And so, I tend to agree with Carl that this is a little bit of Pandora's Box being opened, that it may be good intention, and, you know, I understand the problem is that there's nothing in the system now to help these people, but I'm not sure this is the right answer, and I'm not sure that this very bland, all-encompassing motion is the right way to go. I think it needs to be more specific. So, I'm opposing this article, and I would suggest that other people do as well until we get more details.
Board of Selectmen, final word. No? Okay. Move for a vote. Anyone else? Okay. This is Article 22 as printed in the warrant. It's a majority vote, failed by the Board of Selectmen, 5 to 0. Finance Committee, one person liked it, four didn't. All those in favor of Article 22 as printed in the warrant, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
No.
Motion fails. 23?
Article 23. Move to see if the town will vote to authorize the Board of Selectmen to grant an easement for the purpose of installing, maintaining, operating, and repairing electric facilities, pad mount transformers, wires, cables, conduits, manholes, handholds, fittings, and equipment for electronic services, service, and communications, and relay purposes over, under, across, upon a certain par, a certain parcel of land owned by the town. Located... I don't have that.
That's your motion. Move the town vote to...
I don't have the same one. Great. Much easier than trying to explain that.
Well, you can explain it after.
I'm going to explain it, but much easier than reading the essay I have in front of me. Motion. I move the town vote to approve Article 23 as printed in the warrant.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Kim. Thank you, Kim. The description, "The purpose of the article is to grant Eversource an easement overriding the lease which allowed the installation of a transformer and related infrastructure on town property to better supply electricity to the town and its residents." Currently, the site is planned for the library taking up a little over a space, parking space, and that will give infrastructure for much safer build-out of electrical infrastructure for just around 800 people, I think 750, I believe, was the number. And that will allow safe, less infrastructure that can be damaged through storms and whatnot.
Yes.
Debbie Grace, 6 Pine Ridge Lane. I just wanted an explanation why the selectmen all didn't vote in favor of this. Also, who, can I ask all my questions at once and then sit?
Please.
Were there other locations that were less visible and obvious considered for this? And then, who is going to be responsible for the plantings or whatever's put around it so that it doesn't look awful?
Can you answer the questions? I have, I voted in favor of it, so for the unfavorable, I'll defer. The plantings will be done by Eversource themselves. It was brought up to, I believe the library chose what they wanted planted there or put there. There was a couple of different options. And then, as far as another site, that was not, to my knowledge, was, I have never heard that discussed, to my knowledge. But to defer to other people that voted against it on the Board of Selectmen, I will...
I opposed the easement because we have a license agreement with Eversource right now that gives them the ability to install the transformer, and the license agreement can be revoked if in the future we need to, I don't know, do something else with the property, sell the library. I don't, I don't know what the future holds, but the license agreement allows them to install the transformer. So, I was opposed to a perpetual easement. I don't know if that's true for the other two folks that voted against. Yes? Or you want to speak to it? Okay.
I agree with what Kim said. I would just add that I looked at the easement as permanent. I'm not sure if Kim said that, but the easement is permanent, the license can be revoked.
Agreed.
Thank you. I, I'm confused...
We don't know who you are, but we do know who you are.
Sorry, sorry. Pine, 93 Elle Street. Where on the library property and how much space on the library property? And what will it look like? And does the transformer sound like a buzz all day long?
It's one parking space. It is, it's towards the, oh...
Away from the street.
It's away from the street, towards the back corner on the right side if you're looking at, if you're looking at it from the street view. Actual degrees, I would ask somebody like Mark Guadaboni, he flies a lot. Paul Bazler has a little bit of information on it. I don't know if he's still here. I'm calling on him right now.
Closest spot to Cross Street.
Go ahead, Paul.
Yeah, but he wants me to answer his question. That's okay. All right. Let's get this off the back chest. I am not a representative of Eversource. So, what I'm going to tell the body is what Eversource told me. They're looking at the island at the end of where Cross Street is, they want to take up a parking space. I was told that it's going to increase the electrical grid for 770 houses in that area. If a lot of people remember, seven years ago, we lost power in this town for five days. That wasn't a good time at all. The area I'm worried about is the intersection, 27106 and Main Street. When we lost power for five days, Cumberland Farms lost power, we had no lights. I, for one, as a resident of the town, would like to see this pass, but I also understand the constraints from the library people. I was told that the board of directors to the library approved abreviations around the transformer. I was told the transformer's not going to hum, and I was told that by putting the transformer at this location, they would somewhere down the road do away with the substation on Landing Road that is subject to flooding in the bad storm times. So, Pine wants that replaced, so that's a good thing. So, as a resident, and I'm speaking as a resident, I would like to see this body vote in favor of this. Do you have any other questions that I can try to answer?
Ian?
Lorraine Bergio, 42 Withersby Street. Showing my ignorance, and could you explain to me what is a transformer? Is it the little box? Is it the big thing? What exactly does it look like? And if it's going to be away from the building itself, great. But I don't understand what a transformer is. I don't know electrical...
You've probably seen them around, but they're rectangular boxes.
Like, green, about this big?
They can vary in size. So, if you go down Landing Road, you'll see a large transformer there.
Yeah, because sometimes you see them huge, sometimes you're small, and if it's just something about normal...
They described it the size of the parking spot, right?
Yeah. Yes. They said it would fill a parking spot, and like, in different areas, like in Plymouth, downtown Plymouth, they, just the town themselves, they allotted to have them painted to kind of like, look festive, right? Look, they kind of have like ships and things on it.
Why not?
So, at the end of the day, you know, they, they basically said, if the town, what the town wants, you know, if they want different types of plants, they want it painted, whatever they want to mitigate the look, will, they, they are offering to do that. And that's what they've done in neighboring towns.
Thank you, because I wasn't quite sure exactly the scale of what a transformer is.
Yeah, and I'm, I'm not a representative, nor am I an expert on Eversource's transformers, but to be fair, it's modernizing what, you know, what they want to do. And the Landing Road elimination is a big, is a big deal. They're not, you know, promising it right away. That's a big, that would be a big deal considering the location of where Landing Road Transformer Station is.
So, it's a reasonable size that doesn't hum. Okay?
Okay. New information only, please. Sir?
Kevin Johnson, 5 Summer Street. And I just, I wanted to ask, did Eversource, you know, make a, take a position on this as an easement versus a license? And does anyone have a, you know, an idea of what they'll do if this isn't approved?
That's a good question.
I don't have the answer for the question. They always want an easement.
Paul does. Paul, come back to the mic, please.
Right now, I have a, a application for road opening permit on my desk, I am the highway superintendent, for them to start installing this transformer because of the license agreement that the selectmen gave them. So, it was explained to me, and I watched the selectmen's meeting, what this happened at, if town meeting doesn't okay this easement, although they have a...
Can you finish?
...a agreement with the selectmen, they can still put this in. So, I, I don't know, I wish there was a representative of Eversource here, which I'm surprised there isn't, but...
Thank you.
That's what I know.
So, Paul, Sheila Vaughn, 7 Fraser, Kingston, Mass. I was the other person that said no, and that's my exact reason why I did not do that. We did a license agreement literally like on August 15th with Eversource, and they came asking for a license agreement. Ryan Earl is no longer with them, to do the license agreement, and that was with us, and I like to have a license agreement as compared, as compared to an easement. I just feel as though they still have to do it with the license agreement, and why are we giving them an easement if we have a license agreement? Because then we can, I feel like it's stronger to have the license agreement, to be honest.
Thank you. Last question, sir.
Richard Loring, 30 Tremont Street in Kingston. My concern is, one, we don't have a representative for Eversource here. In the past history I've seen with Eversource, all they do is take, they don't give anything back. If you look at what they're doing on Main Street, look at the impacts on the sidewalks as far as handicap access is concerned. They do not care. Look at what they're doing at the transfer station on Pembroke Street, expanding it completely. Look at the new power poles they're putting up on any of the major sources. All they're doing is expanding. They don't care about the little person, they don't care about the Town of Kingston, they care about where they can put their wires. If the library trustees did not approve this, then I think we ought to at least put a hold on it until such time as Eversource can actually meet with the people that are going to be impacted, and that's the library. And that's an important resource that we have in the town. It may not be the most eloquent, may not be the biggest or the finest, but it's a piece of property, and that's what we have as representatives of the Town of Kingston. Let's support the library and not Eversource.
Thank you, sir. We're going to move this to a vote. It's a two-thirds vote.
Can I just address that really quickly? The, the library trustees chose not to vote on it.
Okay.
So, they asked us to vote on it. They didn't take a vote.
Thank you. They didn't take a position. So, Article 23 as printed in the warrant is a two-thirds majority vote for it to pass. Board of Selectmen was a 2-3 non-favorable vote. So, all those in favor of Article 23 as printed, the one, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say aye.
No.
Motion fails. 24.
I'm glad I have the shortest motion tonight. So, move the town accept the provisions of subsection B.1 of section 26 of chapter 28 of the Acts of 2023, which amend Mass General Law, Chapter 44, Section 54. So, the description, "The town's investment advisor has recommended that in order to create further diversification of investments and investment strategy, the so-called prudent investor rule will allow the town to better construct trust portfolios with a wider selection of investments and potentially improve long-term results and reduce overall risk."
Open for debate? Don't see anyone? Move the question. Article 24, a majority vote, favorable by our Finance Committee and our Board of Selectmen, and special thanks to the Finance Committee for all they do, and the Board of Selectmen, and for the two police officers that are here today. But those all in favor of Article 24 as printed in the warrant, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Article 25.
Move that the town ratify the tax agreement for real and personal property taxes by and between the Town of Kingston and IGS Solar LLC for a large ground-mounted solar facility and battery storage system located at 8 Cranbury Road, including 14.21 acres of land as approved by the Board of Selectmen and the Board of Assessors on December 3, 2020, and which is on file with the town clerk, or to take any action relative thereto.
Okay.
This is just something that's already been ratified by the Board of Assessors and the Board of Selectmen, and council has advised that we need you guys to vote on it. So, here we are.
Open for debate? Seeing no one at the microphone. All those in favor of Article 25 as printed in the warrant, and this was, we'll just leave it at that. All those in favor of Article 25 as printed, the one, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. One last motion. Motion to adjourn. Do I have a second?
Aye.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Closed. Thank you, everybody.